Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, June 25, 2018. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Press and the Trittown News. Second, on January 9, 2018, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 9, 2018, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Armata?
Here.
Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Here.
Mr. Posh?
Here.
Mr. San Clemente?
Here.
Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the pledge allegiance, please?
(inaudible) United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Tropley, swear in the professionals, please.
(inaudible)
Thank you. Can you use your mic?
Very good.
Thank you. Approval amendments, regular meeting, May 21, 2018. Eligible voters: Armata, Hughes, Mertens, Posh, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
Seconded by...
Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Vouchers?
No vouchers.
Correspondence?
Correspondence? We have some correspondence I emailed to the members about some litigation. I think it went today, so if you haven't seen it yet, you will see it.
What is it about?
It was something from Ron Kachera on the Parisi litigation.
Oh, okay.
I also have a letter from the attorney, Jason Ritty, who is the attorney for Cream Puff Farms, which was scheduled to be heard tonight. His applicant is actually looking at another property, and there's a possibility that he may be able to close on that property by July 31, and that property is already a kennel, so he may withdraw his application, he's not sure. But he asked that we could please carry this application to August 13, then he would know better. He also granted the board an extension of time through August 27 to allow it to be heard on the 13th if they don't proceed the other way.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience for case number BA 17-19, Cream Puff Farms LLC? Seeing no hands, this case will be carried to August 13 with no further notice.
Right. I also had correspondence from Francesco Tango. His application was also on tonight. He had to go away for work, so he asked that that be rescheduled to September 24, and he had not noticed, so he will just notice for that date.
He hadn't noticed?
No.
So he couldn't have been heard tonight, anyway?
No, no, and he found out he was going away, he didn't notice, so...
Okay.
And the last item is an email...
Let me announce...
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, anyone in the audience for case number BA 0802A, Francisco Tango? This case will be carried to September 24, and he will notice at that time.
Notice, yes.
Okay.
The last item is regarding stormwater training. It was an email I sent to all the members. Most of the zoning board members have done it, but there are a few that have not. If you have taken it, please make sure you email me that you have taken that training.
You got mine, right?
Yes, I did. You have to take the training by July 1, and I need to keep a list of who takes it and the date that they take that training, because it has to go in the Township Stormwater Prevention Plan. So please make sure you only have the rest of this week to take that training. If you need any help with it, or you need the link again, just give me a call or send me an email. Okay? And that's all I have.
Okay, resolutions. Case number BA 18-01, Freehold Church of Christ. Resolution granting expansion of a non-conforming conditional use and a minor site plan approval. Eligible voters: Mertens, O'Donnell, Posh, San Clemente, Orozco, Moretti, and Nansen. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. San Clemente. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Resolutions memorialized. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome aboard, Helen. Just...
Thank you.
You've got some big shoes to fill.
Right.
Okay. Applications before the board. Case number BA 03-10, Restoration Family Worship Center. This is an extension of time. Application of Restoration Family Worship Center. His applicant and owner seeking a one-year extension of time on a preliminary and final site plan, conditional use variance, Woodlands Management Plan, approved to construct a one-story house of worship on premises known as Block 72, Lot 279 Ford Road.
Good evening. Leah Letterberger from the ground law firm representing the applicant.
Could you just... We can't hear you. Can you speak into the mic, please?
You can sit, you can sit right there, just pull that mic, that bar, that's a mic.
Cool, okay.
There you go.
This application for an extension of time comes pursuant to Rule to NJSA 40:55D-12A. It's a pre-approved final site plan with the conditional use variance. We came before the board last year seeking an extension of time. Basically, there was, because of the recession, there was not enough funding to construct a single-story house of worship. The property had been maintained without any violations, but the congregation was actively seeking funds to construct their house of worship. It was represented that one year would hopefully be enough, but may not be enough. We're back again today. Unfortunately, one year wasn't enough, but at this point, the congregation is prepared financially to construct a house of worship, and that's why we're seeking an extension of time to build. And I have a witness, if I can serve him in.
You want to swear him in?
Just before, can we get a... Before we... Can we just have her name again, because we didn't catch that?
My name, Leah Letterberger.
Could you spell it?
Sure. It's Leah, L-E-A-H, Letterberger, L-E-D-E-R-B-E-R-G-E-R.
Thank you.
Brian Murphy, M-U-R-P-H-Y, Principal of FWH Associates, Licensed Professional Engineer Planner in the State of New Jersey. I've been before this board many times.
Education?
Yes. I have a Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering from New Jersey Institute of Technology in Sienic Newark. I've been practicing engineering since 1995. I've been President of the Osh County Society of Professional Engineers and been before this board many times.
We accept your credentials.
Thank you very much.
You can sit.
All right. So the approval basically blocks in the zoning on the property. The zone still hasn't changed on the property. As our attorney indicated, we're looking at a one-year extension. The use variance runs with the property and does not extinguish, as indicated in Mr. Mallon's letter. So we're basically looking for a one-year extension on the final approval of the site.
Now, this is your second one-year extension, correct?
Yeah, so it got convoluted because we had the Permanent Extension Act in there as well.
Correct.
But yes, I think this is our final extension.
Okay. Mr. Mallon?
No objection. They've tried to get the funding. What he states is correct. I have no problem with the extension.
Any questions from the board? For his testimony, they're prepared now to move, so...
Right. We were concerned that it's been 14 years, even though it's been, you know, ongoing. We wanted to make sure that, at this point, you were ready to move forward. As you state it, you are. That you have the funds.
Proven in 2004.
That's correct.
Okay. Yes. Thank you. Any questions from the professionals? Seeing none, any further questions from the board or comment? Mr. Tropley?
This is one of the rare extension of time applications that required public hearing and notice, and notice was made. I would just ask if there's anyone in the audience, Mr. Chair, if anyone had a question or a comment, but this was a notice public hearing per the MLUL.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have a motion open to the public?
I'll make a motion open to the public.
Motion by Mr. Armata?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. O'Donnell. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, anyone in the public wishes to come forward, ask a question, or make a statement in regards to this application? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
Motion to close?
Motion to close by Mr. San Clemente.
Seconded.
Mr. Moretti? Can... All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
I'll make a motion to grant the extension for one year.
Seconded.
Motion by Mr. O'Donnell, seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Armata?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. O'Donnell?
Yes.
Mr. Posh?
Yes.
Mr. San Clemente?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good one. Yes. Okay, next application before the board. Case number BA 1806, L-N-L Paving Company, Inc. Use variance preliminary and final major site plan. Application of L&amp;L Paving, Inc. As applicant in One Greenway LLC and Two Greenway LLC as owners, seeking a use variance and preliminary and final major site plan approval to develop the property as a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility with improvements consisting of removal of a portion of the existing concrete manufacturing facility, rehabilitation of existing storage building, construction of quality-controlled building weight station, installation of an office trailer near existing office, the removal and replacement of approximately 13 acres of impervious coverage with landscaping of total of 250 trees, and installation, other associate improvements to premises known as Block 177, Lot 6201, formerly Lots 62 and 64, 89 Yellowbrook Road. This application was originally scheduled to be heard May 7, 2018, when it was carried to June 25 with no further notice. Expiration date, July 21, 2018. Mr. Butler?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name is Michael Butler, B-U-T-L-E-R, from the law firm of Eckert Steens, on behalf of the applicant tonight, L&amp;L Paving.
Yes, sir. Mr. Gazarovski?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. My name is Ron...
Why don't you sit down? I know you'd like to stand, but pick you up on the mic.
Actually, I prefer to sit. Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, my name is Ron Gazarovski. I'm an attorney with offices in Red Bank, New Jersey. I've appeared before this board previously with regard to this specific application with regard to my position for a certification with regard to the use. I represent Stavola Leasing. I am here to appear in opposition to the application.
Great, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Butler?
Well, the first thing I think that we need to talk about is that there was a question regarding the notice for the hearing. I think Mr. Gazarovski challenged whether the notice was adequate.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I did, in fact...
And just before, if I may, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gazarovski, you represent Stavola Leasing?
Yes.
And how is Stavola Leasing an interested party in this matter?
I'm sorry?
How is Stavola Leasing an interested party in this matter?
It owns property within the township of Howell.
What property does...
Well, I earlier... I don't have that information with me this evening. I earlier made their presentation when we appeared before the board previously with regard to the interpretation.
This is a new application, sir.
I'll provide the lot and block to you before the hearing's over.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
May I ask another question?
Yes, sir, Mr. Butler.
Does Stavola Leasing own property within 200 feet of my client's property on 89 Yellowbrook Road?
Stavola Leasing owns property and operates a business within the township of Howell.
You don't know the location of any of the property?
I advise you that I will secure that when we have a break, and I'll provide it to the board as well as to you. I did it once before, I'll do it again.
Okay, and what business does Stavola Leasing operate in the township of Howell?
Stavola Leasing operates a real estate company.
Mr. Butler, I'd like to move on to the issue of the notice that both Mr. Gazarovski and I talked about. Mr. Chair, just for the record, Mr. Gazarovski had provided me a letter directly, June 20, 2018, regarding the notice. I'm prepared to make a recommendation, but I indicated to Mr... Both to Mr. Butler and to Mr. Gazarovski that I would permit them to state their respective positions, and if Mr. Gazarovski wanted to place his objection on the record afterwards, I will then advise the board as to my findings.
Okay.
Thank you. Can we move on with that, gentlemen?
Yeah, very, very briefly. I noticed my objection stating the fact that in his application, in his notice, the applicant sought that he was seeking to secure an approval and referred to a... An existing concrete manufacturing facility, and the words used are, "The use of the site as a concrete manufacturing facility will continue, albeit as a bituminous asphaltic concrete manufacturing facility." Early on, it says, "The applicant is presently seeking preliminary and final site plan approval with use and bulk variance to demolish a portion of the existing concrete manufacturing storage facility," then go on to refer to that. This was never on... There was never on this property a concrete manufacturing facility, and I think that was determined by the earlier application before this board. When I sought an interpretation, what was determined at that time, there was, in fact, a facility that manufactured concrete products, not a concrete manufacturing facility, and I would state, I believe that this is misleading to the public when they read this notice. In addition to that, there is no use in the township of Howell identified as a bituminous concrete plant. It's not known anywhere in the state of New Jersey as bituminous concrete. It's not known as that by the DOT, and it's specifically known as a hot asphalt plant or an asphalt plant. It's identified in your zoning ordinances as an asphalt plant, not as a bituminous concrete plant, and I would only suggest to this board, the whole purpose of a notice is to be... Give clarification and clarity to the public, and I would respectfully submit that this does not.
Mr. Butler?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Notice Statute, NJSA 40:55D-11, says that you have to provide four things in your notice. One, you have to identify the property. Two, you have to identify when the hearing is supposed to happen. Three, you have to identify what you're seeking. And four, you have to identify where someone can find those plans. The notice that was provided does all four of those things. I want to note for the record that Mr. Gazarovski is not challenging three of those four. He's only challenging the description of the nature of the use that we're seeking approval There are other issues that he raises in his letter that he's not bringing up, that he doesn't bring up at this point, so I'm assuming at this point that those are moot points. What he just raised was that there was a prior industrial use here that we didn't notice that it was a concrete manufacturing facility, that there was a concrete manufacturing facility. There was a concrete manufacturing facility out there. That's just a fact. They manufactured concrete, they put it into forms and made pipes. That's what the use was. What my client is doing, what was put in the notice, was that they're taking down a portion of that concrete manufacturing facility. They're doing that. They're keeping up a portion of it to be a storage building. When I get into the testimony, we'll get into what that portion of the application is, but that's what they're doing, and that's what the notice says. They are also developing, or they're proposing to develop, a bituminous concrete manufacturing site facility out there on the property. Mr. Gazarovski says that that word is obsolete, it's... No one uses it. I don't know that Mr. Gazarovski is an expert enough to say something like that just off the cuff, but if you look at the Howell Land Use Code, in Howell Land Use Code, bituminous concrete is used. If you look at the resolution of approval for the... Not the resolution of approval, the resolution for the interpretation that this board adopted a few months ago, bituminous concrete is used in that, as is the words asphaltic concrete. What they use is one and the same. If you look at Mr. Gazarovski's application for interpretation, he also uses the word bituminous concrete. So the notice provides enough information to the general public that if they want to know what's going on in this property, they know that part of what we're asking for is a bituminous concrete, asphaltic concrete manufacturing facility. They can then make a decision if they want to go to the town and look at the plans that are there. They can make an informed decision if they want to come to a public hearing. The notice meets the standards as per the statute and the case law, and I've asked this board to take jurisdiction and allow us to move forward with this application.
One last comment, please, Mr. Chairman. Just one last comment. If you read the notice, what it says is that to rehabilitate and reuse a portion of that building, and it refers to the fact they're going to demolish a portion of the existing concrete manufacturing storage facility. There was never a concrete manufacturing facility there, and as a result of the most recent ordinance, which was in 2017, a concrete manufacturing facility is not a permitted use. So the whole purpose of notice is to be, as clear as a bell, this notice is not, and I've noted my objection.
Mr. Trob, I've just got one question. My... The opening statement that I made with... From the...
Agenda?
Agenda here, is that the same notice that goes out?
No.
No, okay. Mr. Tropley, I'll let you address that, please.
Thank you, gentlemen. I understand the arguments. Mr. Chair, the purpose of a notice is to place literally the public on notice as to an application. Initially, this case was listed a month or so ago when we, the professionals and I, determined that there could have been an issue with respect to a D6 height variance. That was taken care of by the applicant. In fact, the case was adjourned for re-noticing. I agree with Mr. Butler that he, in my opinion, is absolutely correct on the aspects of the notice. A notice is to place the public on notice, to specifically identify the property, to indicate to the public what is happening there, the kinds of variances that are being requested. In this case, two variances, two use variances, site plan approval. The burden, remember, remains with the applicant to move forward. I believe that there's more than ample information in the notice of public hearing to permit this to go forward, and, Mr. Chair, I would urge that you find that the notice is appropriate. I know the service appears to have been made, and service is appropriate. I would advise the board to take jurisdiction of the case and move it forward. Thank you.
We'll move forward, Mr. Butler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do you have any witnesses?
Yes, I have two witnesses, if I could. Just to back up, because I know we jumped in first to have argument regarding the notice. So, once again, my name is Michael Butler. I represent the applicant tonight, L&amp;L Paving. Thank you so much for your time tonight. My client, L&amp;L Paving, is the tenant at 89 Yellowbrook Road. It's in the SED zone. It's Block 177, Lot 62.01. It used to be 62 and 64, but the lots were combined as per condition of approval from a minor site plan that we received in 2006. What my client is asking to do is to demolish a portion of an existing concrete manufacturing facility, keep a portion of a storage building in the back, develop the property with a bituminous concrete manufacturing facility. For your information, we also, tonight, will be talking about another recycling proposal operation that'll be on the property. And I say it's for your information, we want to provide as much information as we can to the board as to how the whole property is going to operate. The board does not have jurisdiction over that portion of the use. It's regulated underneath state statute, and we're going through the approval process at the time for that approval, but, like I said, we want to make sure that the board understands what we're doing with the entire piece of property. I don't know if any of you have seen the property or have been to the property even prior to 2016, when my... Before my client purchased the property, but before my client purchased the property, it was in need of a lot of TLC, a lot of elbow grease, and my client moved out there in 2016, and it has since then been just renovating the property and making it really a gem, and this is the next step to make this property a diamond. You know, they're going to take away... This is a 35-acre piece of property. It's industrial. They're going to take away probably about 20... 29 acres or so is, right now, developed and has impervious coverage. They're going to take away about 13 acres of impervious coverage out there and really make it look beautiful. They're going to plant grasses, they're going to plant trees. That property is going to look entirely different than it does now, and amazingly different than it did back in 2015 when my client purchased the property. We weren't sure tonight where we were going to be on the application. I do have about eight witnesses altogether for this application. I only brought two tonight because I didn't know where we were going to be on the agenda. So tonight, I have Lance Reddy Alley, who's sitting to my right here. He's a principal of L&amp;L Paving, and also, after he's completed with his testimony, if we have time, I have Jim Kennedy of Kennedy Engineering, who's our engineer, and he's going to provide testimony.
You want to bring them both forward, or let's swear them in?
Mr. Chairman, if I could?
Yes, sir.
I think I take issue with some of the things Mr. Butler said.
Okay.
First of all, you mentioned bituminous concrete. There is nothing that you submitted that says bituminous concrete. Your reports say hot mixed asphalt, just so you understand that. Two, I think you said, we're in the... Maybe I didn't hear right. SEC, we're in the SED zone, and I do believe that this board does have jurisdiction. When you come in for a recycling application, I know you have to have county and state approval, but this board's also going to have to hear something on the recycling because it's not permitted in the zone. The recycling of rap is part of your application for a hot mixed asphalt plant. That is acceptable to be done, but if you're looking for recycling type B, that also takes into other materials, and just so we understand where you would be coming from.
Okay, if I can, if I can address both of those points, we're here tonight asking for a use variance because the production of bituminous concrete, i.e. asphalt, if you want to call it hot mixed asphalt, as Mr. Mallon does, you can call it hot mixed asphalt. This facility, as you testified, testimony to, can also produce warm mixed asphalt. So it's a bituminous concrete facility that we're asking for use... that we're asking for use approval for this board because it's not permitted in the zone as you made an earlier determination. That's what we're asking for. I've been clear as day since the notice, it never changed. My client's never changed. It is what it is. Secondly, I disagree with Mr. Malin. This board, as I said, will hear testimony about the operations of the recycling use out on the property. That, however, is underneath the jurisdiction of the state of New Jersey as a Class B recycling license. There are steps that we have to go through. First, we have to go to the county. Then we have to go to the state. Those steps are being taken. This board does not have jurisdiction over that use.
We have jurisdiction over the zoning part of it. You're right, we don't have jurisdiction over the Class B, but we have jurisdiction over the Class B, and recycling is not a permitted use in the zone. We can study that and determine it. But based upon all the letters here, we made reference that the recycling part was not part of this application, other than the rap that you use in the hot mixed asphalt.
Once again, I entirely agree with that interpretation. And I would actually ask Mr. Troply if he has a feeling on this legal issue concerning who has jurisdiction over the recycling use.
Mr. Troply?
I'm going to defer to Mr. Malin, to be honest with you. You know, Jack is our point man on these items. And quite frankly, you know, I tend to agree with him. And I'm going to recommend that Mr. Malin, with respect to zoning, the board does have jurisdiction over that, but of course, not over the Class B recycling license.
Well, Secuda came in. You know, that was a Class B. They had to have a use variance to be able to do it.
We've had other applications before us for a Class B. Now, they ultimately were withdrawn because of the condition of the site, and the applicant withdrew. But they came in here for a use variance.
Correct.
And site plan approval.
Correct. That will, at some point, would have to be done because you will have to receive a use variance for that.
Mr. Chairman, if that's the case, then if this is not a...
Mr. Butler's already put on the record that this is just for the site movement altogether. That, you know, but we do have jurisdiction over the use variance for that. At this time, you're not prepared to put testimony on for the recycling for a use variance. But just so you know, you would have to come back for the use variance once you get those approvals from the state and everything, just to get that use variance there. That's going to be...
And so you have heard Class B?
Yes, sir. Secuda. Secuda is one. It came to us for the use variance of the property.
Mr. Chairman, have you heard briefly?
Yeah, give me a moment. Let him finish.
Can we just take one second?
Let's take a five-minute recess here. Board?
The board will recess for five minutes. The zoning board will now reconvene.
Mr. Butler?
Thank you for allowing us to take a few minutes to confer because this is a new issue that we just learned about tonight. So I appreciate you letting us take some time to talk. What we're going to do is not begin our application tonight. We're going to renotice for the July 9 meeting. I believe we were on that agenda.
Yes, you are. I saved that date.
We're going to renotice for the July 9 agenda. We're going to include a request for a use variance, if needed, for the recycling use. In the meantime, I am going to ask all the board professionals if we all could talk about this issue because this is a first issue that, this is the first time we've heard about this issue. And as I stated on the record, I do object to the fact that the board has jurisdiction over the recycling use. So...
It's not per se the recycling use, the B permit. What we have jurisdiction is the site plan for that. We do have, and that does require use variance. It has, you know, Secuda...
You just said two different things. You said you don't have jurisdiction over use, but you have jurisdiction over the site.
No, I didn't say that. That's not what I said.
I just want to be clear.
That's not what I said. We do not have jurisdiction over the Class B recycling permit.
Correct, you do not.
We do not. Nothing at all. We do have control over the use.
And that's where I respectfully disagree. That's why in the time period between now and July 9, hopefully, we can come to an understanding as to the jurisdictional issue. And in the meantime, I will renotice.
Well, see, the whole thing is, is like, Secuda had to come here.
Okay.
What it was, environmental issues. That's what this board addresses. We make sure that there are no environmental issues.
Sure.
What are you doing with the water runoff? Okay, if we don't have any say-so there, then it just goes into the woods. That's the control that the board has, and that's what Mr. Malin will address, is stormwater.
Correct.
The site usage, circulation. All of that is part of that use variance. And that's what this board does have control over.
And I understand the position. Respectfully, I disagree with the position. You know, there are certain things, there are certain regulations that, state regulations, that provide the board with jurisdiction, such as the stormwater regulations. I heard Mr. Brown say, "You guys ought to take your class before the end of the week." So there are certain statutes that provide boards with the jurisdiction to look at the stormwater management and then make decisions. And then there are certain regulations that preempt the board. It's my position that the recycling regulations, and I'm not entirely prepared to talk about this tonight because this is a new issue.
Neither am I, but I, you know, since it's here, we got to...
Exactly.
I'm going to back my engineer. I'm going to back him 100%.
And I understand it. And like I said, it's...
If I also may, would it be the position that even bulk, for example, characteristics wouldn't be part of the jurisdiction? Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, I'm suggesting that the jurisdiction over a Class B permit is held by the state of New Jersey.
That's correct.
Right, and that includes also bulk and use. I mean, there would be no reason for the state to take a position that we can grant a license and then say, hey, towns, you can adopt land use regulations that prohibit that use. That doesn't, that wouldn't work. And that's the reason. And once again, I'm not entirely 100% ready to argue this. But the reason the regulations were put in place was to stop a town, a municipality, from taking a position that Class B recycling use is not permitted in that town.
Correct. I understand that.
Because what the state wants to do is foster the greatest amount of recycling that it can do, which is why it adopted these statewide regulations which preempt the municipality from regulating that use.
I know, but they also, correct me, Mr. Troply, if I'm speaking out of line, but they, the state also refers back to the municipalities because they know their area and surrounding properties better than the state does. They refer back to that. They, you know, we know what our environmental issues are. We know what's what. But, you know, that's an argument that, you know, your professionals are going to have to deal with.
Like I said, I'm not, this kind of came out of, this blindsided us. This came out of nowhere. So, you know, we were not ready to argue this tonight. That's why I'm saying I will take an adjournment. We'll go to the, well, actually, we won't take an adjournment. We'll carry the application to the 9th. We'll renotice so that the public is aware of the fact that we're potentially asking for this new use variance that we were not aware of until tonight.
I mean, Mr. Butler, you say that was brought out, but it's been in my letter since March 20, and explicitly says, "The applicant has indicated, although not part of this application to the board, they are pursuing a Class B license."
Correct.
We had the same language.
Right, that we're pursuing a Class B license.
Right. And I don't argue that you have...
That's true. We are pursuing a Class B license.
Yeah, we're not arguing that point.
Right, the argument is jurisdiction of that aspect of the application.
My understanding is that his Class B license has expired, but I'll stand corrected with regard to that.
And we're not here to talk about the personal uses of the property.
Mr. Chairman, also respectfully, I believe I have a conflict on July the 9th.
That's okay.
But it was already, you know, it was already on the agenda for July 9.
Oh, was that for the 9th also?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then I'll stand corrected.
We knew it would take more than one meeting.
I apologize. I'll change things around.
And all our other dates are...
I understand that.
Okay. So, thank you very much for your time tonight.
I have one question.
Shoot.
During all the previous meetings we had, recycling was never mentioned.
Nope.
And you said you were blindsided by it. What do you mean by that?
We were not aware that this was a use variance issue that this board would be taking, trying to take jurisdiction over the recycling portion of the operations. Once again, since we filed this application, it originally started with the planning board. Since we filed this application with the planning board, I think in 2000, I think in 2007, I don't know the exact date, but since the original inception of the application, the recycling use has always been in there. And no one has ever said that this is a use variance.
But that was never brought up in any of the conversations?
No.
It wasn't part of the, it wasn't part of the application or the interpretation.
This is a new application.
Mr. Chairman, it's understood that they do recycling to create hot mixed asphalt.
Correct.
You have millings that go back in. But a Class B has a lot more other materials that come in here.
Crushed concrete, everything.
And I have no objection to the recycling with the millings because that goes back into the hot mixed asphalt. It's all part of it. I mean, you look at the state requirements. They allow up to a certain percentage that can be used in the mix. That is not what I have. It's when you start getting the concrete, brick, block, tree trunks, tree limbs, tires. And if I remember, we also had an applicant that came in here. I think he had a Class B recycling for tires.
Okay. And we have stated, we've stated in our application what would be recycled out there. It'd be concrete. It would be brick. It would be the millings. So those are recycled. You'll hear testimony when we actually get to it that we're going to reuse that.
We'll deal with that.
Yeah, when we deal with it.
At that time.
Exactly. So, I mean, and I just want to...
But as far as the jurisdiction, that's something you and the professionals need to work out.
Correct. We can talk about that.
And then just renotice for the 9th meeting.
We will do that.
And then we'll do that.
Thank you.
Case number BA 18-06, L&amp;L Paving Company, Inc. This application will be carried to September 9.
No, July 9.
July 9 at 7:30 with new notice. Thank you. Okay. Is there any other business before the board? Professionals, do we have any other business? Jack? Jack? I'm just going to, if you're contacted by Mr. Butler, you know, you'll work this jurisdictional, Mr. Troply. Actually, Mr. Butler, if you don't mind, could you work everything through Mr. Troply? That way, all illegal, it stays legal?
No problem.
Also with you, Mr. Gazarovski, any objections or any concerns? Just address through Mr. Troply. Any suggestions or anything that you have? Would you please go through Mr. Troply?
Mr. Troply tomorrow. I will send Mr. Butler a list of a lot of the clients.
Sir? I didn't hear you.
Mr. Troply tomorrow. I will copy going to the secretary. A list of the property is owned by my client.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you. So, anyway, no further business of the board. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Amara. Secondly, by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Board adjourns at 8:20.